I'd like to call to order the September 12th, 2022 Bayport City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Sinors.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Here.
All present.
It takes us to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments, changes? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Connie, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ethan, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Takes us to proclamations, commendations, petitions, and announcements, and the August recycling award recipient is Jen Hilderly Hinderly at 119 Inspiration Parkway, who will be awarded for her recycling efforts with a grant funds made possible from Washington County. So, thank you very much for your recycling efforts. We will move on to our open forum where we set aside 15 minutes of the council meeting to discuss topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If anyone would like to approach the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, any, we do not have anyone online. Okay, so we can move forward with our consent agenda, including items one through eight. The August 1st, 2022, 2022 City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes, the August 1st, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, the August 22nd, 2022 City Council Workshop Special Meeting Minutes, the August Payables and Receipts, the August Building Plumbing Mechanical and Zoning Permits Report, a special event application from Hometown Hero Outdoors for a fishing event at Lakeside Park on October 8th and 9th, 2022, a donation request from Bayport Community Action League to support Derby Days, the purchase of an R2 Replacement Light Rescue Vehicle for the Fire Department. Any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. John, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Mayor Sinors.
Aye.
As all.
We do not have a public hearing this evening, and we do not have any unfinished business. So, that takes us to our rather lengthy list of new business. And we will start out with a consideration of an application submitted by Anderson Corporation to rezone the parcels located at 707, 727, 743, 759, Third Street North, and adjacent entrance to the facility from R2 Single Family Urban to I Industrial. And Sarah, roll the D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, if I could, perfect. Get that on the screen. As mentioned, the subject parcels are located along Highway 95, which are outlined in red on this map, adjacent to Anderson Corporation's main facility, and are surrounded by a mixture of residential, commercial, and industrial land uses. The parcels are currently zoned residential, but are presently guided for future industrial land use by the city's comprehensive land use plan. The four parcels on the north are vacant and consist of green space or landscaped area, and also provide vehicle access from Highway 95 to the Anderson Corporation employee parking areas. The parcel located further south, addressed at 707 Third Street North, contains an existing single-family house and an accessory detached garage storage building. Anderson has submitted an application requesting that the subject parcels be rezoned from a residential to industrial to reflect consistency with the proposed land use and the zoning of their main facility. The existing house had been previously used for housing interns working at Anderson. However, this use was discontinued over 10 years ago, and because of the state of disrepair, the house is now slated for demolition. Once demolished, the yard area will be restored to be consistent with the adjacent green space that already exists to the north of this parcel. Planting of maple trees along the south flatline of Sixth Avenue will also help soften the transition from residential to industrial land use in this area. Anderson would like to retain the existing garage storage building and utilize it for seasonal grounds maintenance equipment for the surrounding area. Because the zoning ordinance does not allow a garage to exist on a property without a house in residential districts, rezoning of the parcel to industrial would be required. Anderson has noted that access to the storage building would be infrequent, which would not conflict with the adjacent residential neighborhood. It will also be painting the exterior of the building to create a cohesive palette with the main facility. On the city's future land use map, included in the comprehensive plan, the city has guided these parcels for industrial use due to the abandonment of the residential use and anticipated redevelopment by Andersons. Because the proposed application is consistent with this guidance and the proposed use would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, staff is supportive of rezoning the parcels from residential to industrial, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the application at their meeting on August 22nd and recommended approval. The city did not receive any public comments on the application. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions from the city council. Chris, the project representative from Anderson is also present and available for questions.
So, with this change, is there, I mean, if something's industrial, they're typically taxed at a higher rate than if it's residential. So, is that beneficial to the city to make this, this change?
I'm going to defer to our administrator, because I know he had similar questions and did some research on that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the commercial and industrial tax rate is higher than the residential rate. And so, with this, this changing from residential zoning to industrial use, that it will be taxed at a higher rate. Part of the calculation also involves the structures on it, though. So, the structure will be removed from this, one of the structures. So, this will be taxed similar to like an industrial parking lot or green space. So, the, we, staff did look at the actual tax impact, and it's, it's not, because we're not building a new industrial facility, the taxes aren't going to increase significantly, but it, it, it will be taxed higher.
Okay, so at least it's not.
It's not a loss. It's not a loss.
Sarah, can you talk a little bit about, I know, just about impervious coverage? And as it relate, or do you know how this affects the Anderson impervious coverage? I mean, it's a pretty small parcel when you consider the entire facility, but this would be, I mean, it's more green space.
Councilmember Dahl, thanks for the question. Yes, this would be a net increase in pervious or green space from the existing conditions. As mentioned, the house will be demolished, so that's an increase right there. And also, they're not improving the parcel with any additional impervious.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything in there that, you know, 25 years from now, they come back and say, well, we want to build something on there? Is that something that we can not have that happen? It sounds like they're trying to do more green space, which is good, so.
Right. Councilmember Gilmar, thanks for the question. Yes, this Anderson Corporation as a whole is probably close to or exceeding the maximum impervious coverage. So, we have been working with them on several different projects to offset that. They've done some storm water improvement projects. So, to answer your question specifically about these parcels, the city would have to approve a variance to allow additional impervious surface to be rebuilt in the future.
Any other questions?
No, I have no questions. I think it seems to make perfect sense for everybody involved, so.
Thank you. Michelle, anything for you, Connie?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Madam Mayor, there is a resolution in the city council packet for some language when you're ready for a motion.
Perfect. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the rezoning of 707, 727, 743, 759, Third Street North, and adjacent entrance to Anderson Corporation from R2 Single Family Urban to I Industrial. An I or a one? An I as presented.
Thank you. Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Ethan.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ethan. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Due to my employment situation, I'm employed by Anderson Corporation. I'm not comfortable voting, so I'm going to abstain.
Mayor Sinors.
Aye. Very good. Thank you, John.
Four, zero, and one.
All right. Thank you very much, Sarah. And we're going to move on to item number two, which is to consider amendments to Appendix B, the zoning of the Bayport City Code of Ordinances related to the regulation of swimming pools and ordinance summary for publication. So, if you'd like to present this topic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the past few months, staff has been working on amendments to the swimming pool ordinance, specifically to update specifications to be consistent with the new building code regulations, as well as make it easier for property owners and contractors to read and understand. In working with the city's building official to make the necessary updates, it was brought to staff's attention that more municipalities are now recognizing a key operated power lacking automatic cover as an acceptable protective safety feature for pools as opposed to a fence that surrounds the entire pool. Currently, the zoning ordinance recognizes a cover as a suitable alternative in the R1 District, which primarily applies to Point Road. However, when looking at similar lot characteristics in other areas of the city, staff believes it would be appropriate to extend those provision to lots in the R2 District with a minimum area of 35,000 square feet, which is similar to R1 or the Point Road. When considering smaller lots in the downtown area and an inspiration, it was noted that a cover may not be a fitting alternative to a fence as these areas have several young families with children and are in close proximity to neighboring lots. For these reasons, for these safety and liability reasons, staff is not recommending the cover provision be allowed on less than 35,000 square feet. However, this may be something the city could consider sometime in the future. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the ordinance at their meeting on August 22nd and recommended approval. The city did not receive any public comments on the ordinance, and staff is recommending approval of the amendments as proposed.
Great, thank you. So, I did receive one question, and it was just from a resident that already has a pool area, but there isn't any requirement for them to change. If they're already in compliance and they have a fence, and they maintain the fence, then there's no changes required.
Madam Mayor, correct. This is just an additional provision for new installation of pools or if someone who met the minimum requirements and decided they no longer desired a fence and wanted the cover as an alternative, they would be eligible to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I ask you, just because I'm trying to visualize 35,000, just because we have a pool, and I couldn't imagine not having the fence around it, because all it would take is, we're in town with other kids. All it would take is one time for one of us to walk away and forget to put that pool cover on without that fence. So, I'm trying to visualize what's 35,000, like an area.
Councilmember Carlson, a traditional lot of record in Bayport is right around 7,000 or 7,500 square feet. So, they would need, you know, four or five lots to meet that minimum requirement of the 35,000. And there are some scattered sites in down. And there are some scattered sites in downtown Bayport that might be close to meeting that requirement, but it would primarily be, again, Point Road, Saint Cory Bluffs on Osprey Boulevard. They're in that ninety-some thousand square feet, so it's a pretty good lot size that you would need to meet this requirement.
Okay.
And the homes and inspiration would mostly not meet this, right?
Councilmember Hanson, yes, they, they average between six thousand and about twelve thousand square feet. So again, no, those would not be eligible.
Thanks for asking that question, Connie. I have the same question.
That just makes me feel a little better, because, like I say, being a pool owner and having neighborhood kids around.
Yeah.
And if you just ran for a second down the road and forgot to put that.
Yeah, a fence is up twenty-four, seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year, so.
So that makes me feel a little better that there isn't as many in town that could, because I know there's several.
That being said, if you've ever had experience with those cover, they are, they're pretty amazing what they support for, to me, what they look like. I'm like, wow, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I guess.
They are nice.
Yeah, I'm not, not challenging whether the cover would do its job. I'm more challenging whether the homeowner would do their job.
Close it.
But, thank you, that helps.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Sarah. Would someone like to make a motion on this topic?
I will. I'll move to adopt an amendment to Appendix B, zoning of the Bayport City Code of Ordinances related to the regulation of swimming pools and an ordinance summary for publication as presented to us tonight.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle, and roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Madam Secretary Norris.
Aye.
Eyes all.
Great. Item number three is to consider amendments to Chapter forty-eight, the Storm Water Management of the Bayport City Code of Ordinances related to the protection of public waters and chloride reduction and ordinance summary for publication. Matt?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the city was reauthorized to discharge storm water associated with our MS four. What that means is there was a bunch of unfunded mandates that were required to move forward with that. Most of them were administrative in nature, but this final one, before the twelve-month period of making corrections, ended was actually changing part of the ordinance. It primarily deals with essentially chloride reduction, which would be a major component of adding salt during the winter. And so it requires, there's a couple of requirements. One is how you store a salt or even the sand for de-icer regulation. It requires that it's either stored indoors or under a cover. Also, there's a component of best management practices of when you transfer it, transfer it from the storage facility into whatever you're spreading with, say, a dump truck. And so the, the changes are outlined in the memo here and on the ordinance. They're not significant. Sarah and I worked together to actually break the storm water management ordinance into two, what we call two articles now, just to make it easier so that, otherwise we were adding a weird section at the end of the current ordinance. And so now we have a public waters protection ordinance article and a chloride reduction article. And the chloride reduction part is the stuff that was added. Staff would recommend that we adopt a motion as, as shown. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Matt?
So, do we typically put the penalties right in an article like this? Or would it be better to have them referenced somewhere else so you can change the penalty amount? Or is it just, you know what I mean, like sometimes you get into the, oh my gosh, now we have to increase that and you got to go back and change your whole article, or is that not even part of, am I misreading that, where it's a seven hundred dollars?
Yeah, Councilmember Hanson, actually, the penalty is actually included in the public works protection one and in the chloride reduction one. So it's just something at the end that we included.
Okay. I just didn't know if that was the best practice for that, so.
Madam Mayor, members, Councilmember Hanson, this, typically with these types of enforcement policies, those penalties are within the ordinance itself.
Okay.
Because they're very specific and they're, there's, it's a misdemeanor, punishable. So that, that's a little different than just a fine, civil fine that we would apply to, or some of the other, other violations, but that is typical that we do put them within each section that's unique like this.
Okay, and so that's not going to change anytime soon, the fine amount?
No.
So that we don't have to go back?
No, we won't be changing that. If we were to change that, we would be required to change that like we would with the regular fee schedule. But typically, these types of, these types of penalties that we have throughout the code are not changed. A lot of it refers to just statutory language that we include for a lot of those. It's not something we'll be changing often at all, if at all.
Any other questions? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt an amendment to Chapter forty-eight, Storm Water Management of the Bayport City Code of Ordinances related to the protection of public waters and chloride reduction and an ordinance summary for publication as presented.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Madam Secretary Norris.
Aye.
Eyes all.
Thank you very much. Next item is to consider quotes for building roof repair replacement work at City Hall and picnic shelter number one, as well as pump house number four. So, Matt?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you recall, earlier this year, there was a storm that produced quite a bit of hail, and we had some damage on City Hall and at pump house number four. Our insurance adjuster came out and reviewed the damage and confirmed that it would be covered under our current policy. So it was then on us to come up with a couple of contractors who could provide quotes for that work. We were actually included the picnic shelter into that work just for the fact that it would create a bigger project and potentially give us a better scale of better pricing. As it turns out, all contractors are very busy and we have finally gotten two quotes here just recently. Today, this, or this morning, in fact, was my second quote that I received. It'd be, you should all have a Burwell Roofing Company quote that was on your chair. So the roof damage at City Hall was isolated to the metal portion that sits above the council chambers, and there was a skylight that was damaged at pump house number four. As I said, both of these are covered under the insurance policy, and it's a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible for the event as a whole and not for just location. As I had indicated, we received two quotes. The first quote was from Lift Bridge Builders, and the second quote was from Burwell Roofing. The Lift Bridge Builders quote is obviously less than what the Burwell Roofing portion is. One thing that's missing on the Burwell quote is the park pavilion. So tonight, I'm asking for acceptance for just the City Hall roof and then the skylight replacement on pump house four. And then if, if it's okay with the council, then authorization to move forward with whichever quote is less than, once the Burwell Roofing quote comes in for the park pavilion. The current quote from Lift Bridge Builders for the park pavilion, as you can see, is forty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars. Adam and I did talk earlier today about possibly holding out and waiting for that price to come down potentially, but we're not sure that it actually will, based on materials. Potentially in a couple of years, stuff could stabilize, but there's, there's a possibility that it won't do, so.
Can we do them separately, like if we want Burwell to do the skylight and the other companies to do that?
And that, that's not something that I would do separate.
Okay.
Yeah, just because the skylight was, those two were kind of together for the quote, and then the park pavilion was essentially separate, so.
Even though they didn't write them up that way?
Right.
Okay. Because it looks like Burwell's skylight is less expensive than.
Yes, it is.
Lift Bridge Builders skylight, but the other thing is that roof is more expensive the other way around, right? If I'm reading this correctly?
Yeah, and for, for, to compare apples to apples, you'll take the alternate twenty-four gauge roof,
That was my next question.
Fifty-one thousand from Burwell, so.
Because it says copper roof versus, and then an alternate roof, and here it just says.
Right.
Steel replace.
The lift bridge, I verified with the Lift Bridge Builder today that it's twenty-four gauge steel roof.
So this is the alternate.
Yep.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions?
Um, I just want to comment, the roof regarding the possibly postponing the shelter roof, that is something that's on our CIP that we were hoping to have done this year. So in addition to that, not wanting to postpone it even further in the hopes that costs would possibly come down. With, at some extent, staff had discussed it, as Matt said, and we think it's best to just have it done sooner than later.
That one's been in disrepair for quite some time.
I have a quick question. How, so it's just literally replacing the skylight, no other roof work needs to be, I mean, flashing and all that stuff that would be with the skylight. I, I guess the reason I ask is, I can imagine years ago maybe why we ask skylights, but why, you know, why wouldn't we just roof that over and not have a skylight?
Yeah, so that's a good, good question, Councilmember Dahl. And the funny thing is that it's not even, usually we have a skylight in, in a pump house so that you can open it up to pull out the pump. But it's not even in that location to pull out the pump. My guess would be that it's probably easier to replace the skylight at this point than to actually try and re-roof just that section.
Yeah, this, that's a nominal amount. It was just something I was more curious about. Okay, thank you.
I was wondering why we needed the skylights, so that makes more sense now. I thought, is it, so if you're in there and there's no light on, you can still see?
All right, any other questions? If not, would someone like to make a motion? And it's actually kind of a two-part now. Just, it's just breaking out, it's one, it's one motion, but it's allowing you to move forward with the lower quote for the shelter upon its receipt.
Yes.
Okay.
Except, let's accept, okay, so, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Let's accept the quote from Lift Bridge Builders for replacement of City Hall roof and the skylight, and then authorize city staff to move forward with the lowest responsible bidder for the park pavilion.
Can I just say, so moved from what, what Matt just said, or do we have to literally repeat?
I think that was clear enough.
I think so too. Okay, thank you, Matt.
So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John, and roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Madam Secretary Norris.
Aye.
Eyes all.
Item number five, consider an interim ordinance prohibiting new or expanded uses related to cannabis and, and ordinance summary for publication. This is over to Adam and our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item has been something that we've been discussing with the council for the past several months regarding the regulation of THC products. If you recall, the, back in July, I believe, was of twenty twenty-two, the Minnesota Legislature recent changes to the law went into effect, which allowed the sale of THC products. There's very little regulation from the state law, and the cities are kind of scrambling as to determine how to deal with this change in the law. The city of Stillwater had passed a moratorium last November, kind of pre, honestly preempting this, but they, they got ahead of it somehow. And so the League of Minnesota Cities, Metro Cities, as I said, a lot of the other cities have been trying to catch up. What this moratorium does is basically puts a pause and a hold on any new sales or new businesses in the city from opening up, opening up a store or venue for this, the sale of this product. Coincidentally, we did get an inquiry today about someone interested in a, possibly opening up a new smoke shop in town. So this would actually, depending on what is being pursued there, if these products are being pursued and that was not clarified in the inquiry, that would be not allowed at this time. It would, anyone who currently sells them would still be able to continue doing that, but this would basically put a pause on it. The, the reason for this is to really just give the council some time, as well as the other communities, to determine how it wants to be regulated, if at all. It, it's, we're not permanently banning them or, you know, sanctioning the sale of them, but it, because the, the regulation has not been worked out through the whole community, I, we've been working with the city attorney's office, and this was their recommendation, is to impose this moratorium, and then the council can decide when it wants to, it's only good for one year. It expires after a year, and then the council can discuss how to regulate it, as I said, if at all. One of the other things in talking with Chief Eastman, our goal should be to be, kind of be in line with the other surrounding communities. That way, we don't either attract or force these types of businesses from one community to the other. So, tonight, I'm not looking to get into the merits of whether or not we regulate it or how to regulate it. Staff has some ideas. We're kind of suggesting possibly a licensing mechanism, same as we do with our tobacco. But that, that would be, this is just for the discussion of the moratorium and to give the city some, the ability, some breathing room to figure out what we want to do, and so we can, you know, help us to do that. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions on the matter.
Questions from the council?
Are there any businesses right now that can sell it in Bayport?
We are not aware of any. Well, can sell it or are selling it?
Can sell it, or both?
Yes, so Holiday would be able to. I don't, I don't think that there's any others. There are some restrictions on how it can be sold and where it can be sold.
Can some bars can sell it?
Coffee shops, liquor machines, grocery stores, gas stations currently.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the basis?
No bar? Can bars sell it?
Exclusive liquor stores, Mayor, Council, exclusive liquor stores are the only licensed business that's currently prohibited from selling these products.
Liquor stores, but not bars?
I'm not aware of any bars that are currently selling them. They are licensed by the Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement, and they have been on top of liquor stores and on-sale liquor as well. I believe they were still kind of investigating the onsite consumption concept for those products. The, the way that the AGE addressed it is that THC, specifically beverages, are not specifically defined under the statute for exclusive liquor stores, but other than that, there's no other sort of regulation prohibiting other types of businesses from selling this product.
So the moratorium doesn't really affect, it's only for new, like someone who's existing right now could just go out and start selling it if they want to.
Correct.
Okay. Interesting.
And do we have any, I mean, if we as a city chose to say we don't want that, we, we can't do anything about that, right? I mean, we have to fall underneath the state's minimum guidelines?
We, we can, we can further restrict it to a higher level. We can be more restrictive than the, than the state, obviously following the, the regulations. But that's, we, we have not had, had the opportunity as a city to discuss that. We haven't had any workshops or any in-depth. We haven't had any workshops or any in-depth conversations. Um, so that, that would be something that, as we said, the council would have the time to then decide and discuss that. Um, the, uh, sorry, I was gonna say something about, uh, oh, the, the council can, can take this up, that staff recommendation is to not wait indefinitely. Obviously, this, this moratorium expires within a year, um, but have a little more time pass before the, so we can see how the other communities are doing it. I know, uh, Stillwater just passed their, you know, they're working out, they worked on their ordinance, um. They obviously have a much different and unique, uh, commercial district, they have multiple commercial districts, and they're restricting it to the number of licenses in each area. Um, so each city will have to do it a little bit different, but the overall intent is what we're looking to kind of either mimic or at least be in line and complimentary, if not, um, you know, an outright conflict, which is what we're trying to avoid.
So if someone started in the meantime, what would happen if we came up with a new ordinance around it, but they're already selling it, just?
They wouldn't be able to under this moratorium.
No, but he, he said it's only for, like, if someone were to start a whole new business, they couldn't do it. But Holiday, for example, could start selling it, we just got done saying, right? So what would happen if they do start selling it and then we come up with something more restrictive in a year? Does my question make sense?
Yes, do you want me to? Okay, Mayor Council, um, so that's, what we're talking about is non-conformities. So if you do not pass a moratorium and a business starts selling this product, then you can't easily come back and say, you can no longer sell this product because they are an existing business. There's some wiggle room there potentially, depending on how this type of use is defined, um, but there's definitely concerns if a business starts selling and you choose to prohibit them in the future. Um, what kind of liability that would be if you tried to enforce it upon them?
So it gives us more flexibility to have this moratorium now, so that in a year from now, we could enforce something. But if we didn't do this, we wouldn't.
You would be able to impose regulations on them, you just couldn't, you likely couldn't, um, prohibit a business that's currently selling from selling something they've been selling. You could put parameters on it, but you couldn't outright prohibit the person who's been doing it very easily.
Maybe limit the level of THC in the product or something along those lines.
Well, that's already limited by the state.
It is, yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, it makes sense, we don't have a plan, I feel like we need to do this.
Yeah.
You know, give us time to figure it out, and I look at the, I totally appreciate that we want to look at surrounding communities, even Hudson, you know, they're not Minnesota, but it's really easy to go over there and just.
Their state.
Do stuff, so it's, I don't know what their state is up to over there, but.
Well, we have such limited retail or business space, I mean, if there was a high population, it would seem disproportionate in our small town. So I think having the time to think about it.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good idea.
Mayor Council, I might make one more recommendation if you're going to adopt this tonight, um, Tom emailed them just a minute ago. Um, I've been working on Woodbury's ordinance for, um, regulation of cannabinoids, and I would recommend striking non-intoxicating from the ordinance that you have, um, simply because intoxicating cannabinoids are legal, and they are different than the word cannabis as defined, um, and you want to make sure that you're encompassing all cannabinoids, whether they're intoxicating or not. Right now, intoxicating cannabinoids, by my reading, are not encompassed in this.
So it would just read, related to cannabis and cannabinoids?
Yes, and there's a couple other uses of non-intoxicating throughout, so it would just be adopting the ordinance with the striking of the use of non-intoxicating throughout.
I like that, thanks for bringing that up.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Good.
Anything? Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll move to adopt an interim ordinance prohibiting new or expanded uses related to cannabis and an ordinance summary for publication as presented.
With the.
With, including the strike through.
As amended?
As amended by our attorney.
Okay, thank you, Connie.
Councilmember.
I'll second it.
Thank you, John, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Sinors.
Aye.
Eyes all.
Okay, that takes us to the topic of the twenty twenty-three budget presentation, and there are, currently are four different resolutions underneath to be considered. Um, over to you, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, just one note, the, there's three resolutions and the, the fourth is actually just an announcement.
Oh, okay.
So, but yes, there are four items. Um, we had a budget workshop, uh, immediately preceding the regular meeting, I apologize for the, apologize to the public for the delay and the regular meeting starting, uh, that conversation, that discussion went long. Um, there were some, some questions that were unresolved, uh, with the budget, I believe, and so my first question to the council is whether or not the council is comfortable at this point, uh, with the information that they received and ready to just vote on this tonight, or if the council would like to further discuss any of the other items, uh, that were brought up this evening regarding the budget and the levy. Um, I am prepared to present the, uh, budget, the proposed preliminary budget and levy. Um, but if the council would like to continue discussing it, uh, we talked about possibly having another meeting later this month. Um, council had a date to select for a weekend. Include it this evening. September thirtieth is the deadline for submitting the figures to the county.
Based on the workshop discussion and what is the, uh, pulse of the council? Move forward this evening with some discussion or, um, have another workshop to go into? I believe it was the CIP in specifically that we wanted to dive into a little bit deeper, but.
If the council, just, Madam Mayor, sorry, if I just add one more thing, if the council would like me to present, uh, the information and, uh, not vote on the CIP, um, that, you know, or not actually vote on any of it, but I can give some of the presentation.
I think that would be very.
For the public and for the council to go over, just kind of a summary.
I, I think that would be great, because then there's a, a public presentation of the budget, so if that's, would that be okay with the council? Even if we then determine?
Yeah, is, I, I, I guess, is it the CIP that's in question? To me, it was the, um.
The levy?
Yeah, the levy, yeah, but.
Well, either, either or all, right? And could, I don't know that we would do it piecemeal, but I.
The, the outstanding question, the, the levy, um, is dependent upon, uh, the, the other factors.
Right.
Uh, the, the question, the outstanding question was the amount of capital savings that we were, the council, uh, had, was considering. And so that would be the, um, that would obviously impact the, the levy amount. So that, uh, if, if the council, uh, would like, I can go ahead and.
I think that we might as well have the presentation, at least it's there for the public, that'd be great.
As Sir will be handing out the printed off presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
John, if we could, uh, queue up the click share, please? Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, the preliminary twenty twenty-three budget, uh, over the, the following, uh, work sessions that we've had, uh, we've put in quite a few staff hours. Um, again, tonight we were discussing the, uh, the budget and the CIP and the levy. Um, after the council does adopt the budget and levy, uh, then in December, and I'll go ahead and make this announcement now, uh, I'll announce it again, uh, for number four, uh, but December fifth is the, the scheduled truth and taxation public meeting. Um, and then after that, the council will decide the vote on the final, uh, property tax levy, budget and CIP. Again, just a reminder, the council can, uh, reduce the levy amount after the preliminary levy is adopted, but it can't increase it. Uh, just a quick overview of the calendar that we've had this year, in June, uh, staff started, uh, compiling and distributing the budget information to the different departments. The department got their budgets back to me, uh, in July. Our first budget workshop was July eleventh, where we discussed the library, uh, budget and levy, as well as, uh, some park CIP, uh, priorities and other budget priorities. Again, on August twenty-second, uh, we had a second workshop, and we discussed the general fund department budgets and the proposed levy with the tax impact information that we got from the Washington County. And, uh, we also had been discussing the Centennial Village Green Pavilion Project, uh, that, regarding the centennial, uh, commemoration. At that meeting, uh, we discussed it quite a bit, but we didn't, uh, finalize anything. Um, we did have, uh, one of the, Councilmember Carlson did have to leave early that evening, um, and Councilmember Dahl was unfortunately unable to attend. Um, that brings us to tonight, as I said, we had a earlier workshop this evening, uh, where we talked about Pavilion Project, and we also touched on the parks and, uh, other infrastructure CIP issues or outstanding items. Um, at some point, uh, before September thirtieth, the council will adopt the preliminary figures, and again, uh, tonight we are establishing December fifth as the truth and taxation public meeting date. The final budget needs to go to the county by December twenty-eighth. Uh, once again, uh, an overview of the, the city's budget, we, we are a full-service city. We provide a very wide range of cities, or wide range of services, we have our own police and fire protection. Uh, we handle, uh, building permits and inspections and planning and zoning for the city. Uh, we offer street maintenance, engineering, administration, library, where it's not very common for a city our size to have its own library. Uh, but we have beautiful parks, uh, we work on the community beautification. We are essentially fully, uh, watered and sewered. Uh, we are working on our storm sewer, uh, which we've identified as needing improvement, uh, we're currently doing a study on the drainage, and hope to have those, that information back later this, uh, possibly in October. Uh, it will impact the, um, it will, it will impact the future CIP, uh, as to which projects, priorities and the timing. Uh, but we have streetlights, uh, we have multiple parking, uh, lots and parking facilities. A couple significant factors, a couple, a few significant factors for the twenty twenty-three budget, uh, we did have a point six percent decrease in healthcare rates, sorry, in health insurance rates. Um, the costs did increase a little bit, uh, but the, the rates themselves were a decrease. Uh, the proposed budget does have a three percent contractual increase in wages for union, and then that was extended to the non-union staff as well. Uh, one thing that we did not have, uh, a lot of control over is our significant increase in the police, uh, workers' compensation costs, uh, for next year. We are part of the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and what we are, we're part of the statewide pool, uh, for police insurance, for workers' compensation, and, uh, due to, to the, uh, many early retirements and medical retirements, um, that, that entire pool was increased, and as you can see there, it was a, almost a doubling of our workers' compensation costs for the police. So that made up a significant, uh, portion of that department increase in their budget. No additional employees were requested this year, um, we are continuing with the full-time police officer and the full-time, uh, OSS, Office Support Specialist position that were approved earlier this year, thank you again. Uh, the market value increased fifteen point five percent average, um, for the city, uh, over twenty twenty-two values, those for residential properties. Another note is that the fiscal disparities, uh, contribution actually decreased, uh, by six percent this year, which does help our levy amount, it reduces our levy need, um, so that was, that was a benefit to us. Our local government aid increased by two point two percent, um, which was just over thirteen, just under fourteen thousand. And our Fire Relief Association went up, state aid we get, uh, for fire relief, went up four thousand, uh, again, those are just pass-through funds, uh, so they don't, they, they increased the expenditure column, but they also increased the revenue side. Um, and then our debt service on the, uh, fire station bond, uh, did go up, uh, four point five percent, and that is a scheduled increase. Uh, the next page, we did continue the cemetery, uh, budget wage allocation, that was something that we added last year. Uh, we did not have any wages included in the cemetery budget, um, but we did start portioning those for allocating the actual labor costs to that department. Uh, we maintained, um, the, the funding for the Emerald Ash Borer, we actually increased it by a few thousand dollars, to add some additional trees that we've identified. Um, one of, one of the things that we also, uh, that, I don't want to say sticks out, but one of the things that the library did request this year was an additional levy increase, um, that, that funding is eligible, the, whatever we increase is eligible from, as a, a match by the Library Foundation, um, but they did, they requested a ten thousand dollar levy increase, and we were able to, uh, accomplish what they were looking to do with a ninety-five hundred dollar library levy increase. Um, the, the capital savings, we did reduce that a little bit, only because we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have as high, the, the amount of equipment and the number of projects that we were doing in twenty-three was lower than in twenty-two. So we did decrease that a little bit, um, well, by twenty percent. Uh, if you remember, this year in twenty twenty-two, we had the fire truck refurbishment, ladder truck, um, we had the front-end loader, uh, which, both of those, that was about almost five hundred thousand dollars, um, just those two items alone. Um, so that did, um, we, we didn't have a need for that equipment this year, so that was reduced. That's something that we'd been discussing at the workshop, is whether, you know, do we want to continue decreasing that to that level or do we want to maintain some of that? Uh, we, we maintained the one hundred eighty thousand for the street reconstruction, uh, we did increase the fire department equipment fund from previous years, not last year. Um, we, we are, again, limited to the department budget to a three percent cap, uh, maximum increase. Um, this, this next year, we're only scheduled to get the, replace the grass rig, which the council did approve earlier this evening, um, on, on the consent agenda, but we, we did increase the, the, the baseline, uh, capital savings for the fire equipment, as we've been discussing for the past couple of years, we, uh, we need to contribute more to that. So, uh, we do, we did schedule, uh, one police squad replacement, um, that we are doing every, once every three years. Uh, twenty twenty-three will be the, the next scheduled, um, date for that. Uh, we are in the Public Works Equipment Fund, uh, we did decrease that, again, from the cost of the loader, uh, back down to, uh, previous years, uh, plus the addition of the, uh, utility slash plow truck that we, it's a two thousand eight model, uh, that we are scheduled to replace. And then the Parks and Recreational Capital Equipment Fund, these are all our park improvement funds, um, we put sixty-five thousand in there. Last year, we had seventy-five thousand five hundred, that we had talked about doing, um, so that was reduced a little bit, um, because the, we, we weren't doing the, it, it, it was reduced closer to the two thousand twenty level, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one level, um, but it's still, uh, thirty thousand more than that used to be. Uh, the cemetery capital fund, we maintained the same, as we had no, it would be upcoming projects. Uh, we've gone over this at the last workshop, but just to, I'm not going to go through all of this, um, but as you can see, this is just a revenue summary. Our, we, we did have, uh, under the general government, that does include, uh, the property tax levy, which then, um, you'll see, it actually has an increase in the revenue, um, that is because of the, the, uh, the levy increase. We did have a couple items, uh, in the general government, our, as I said, our local government aid went up, um, and our fiscal disparities went down, so those, those contributed to that. Uh, one of the items that we did reduce, uh, just based on, was our investment earnings, our investment income, we did decrease that, uh, just because the way the market is currently, uh, we weren't able to, we wanted to be a little more conservative in what we were estimating to receive. Um, as you can see, the, the fire protection did go up, uh, and that's actually listed under, uh, under the three percent, but it is. As you can see, the, the fire protection did go up, and that's actually listed under, under the 3%, but it is within the department, it is at 3%. The, there really weren't any other significant, we reduced the transfer in, and so that's the money that we're taking from our capital savings that we're getting this year, and putting it in as revenue. And then you can see at the, near the, the second line from the very bottom, the library fund revenue, that did, that was increased to 9,500, and so that would result in the levy increase. Overall, our total revenues were down, are scheduled to be down, 1.32%, but a significant portion of that is the 127 in the transfer end that we're reducing it. Under the expenses, the next page. Next year, under elections, it's not a election year, so that came down, even though the dollar amount is fairly insignificant when it comes to the entire budget, but it is in that department much lower. The, both the general government, the recycling administration, billing inspections, those all had staff increases as far as the cost of living adjustment, as well as there's a lot of other costs, both heating, some of our dues to the organizations that we belong to went up. Fuel, materials and supplies increased as well. When you get down to municipal billings, we did not, that, again, increased due to some of the costs, the overhead costs. The Police Department, that one, as you can see, jumps out as the highest increase. Twenty, almost 24,000 of that, or 24,000 plus of that is the workers' compensation increase. There's, one of the unique things about the Police Department staff increases is that they did get the 3% increase, but then with the employees, they have their step increase, and the Police Department, unlike any of the other departments, is weighted at the beginning of their, their entire step schedule. So the first two, three years, they're, they get a higher step percentage than, like, the rest of the city, it's all even. It's even each year. You move up in your advancement. The Police Department, they, they weighted heavier at the beginning. I'm guessing that's possibly for the retention. You know, if we can keep them here a couple of years, then they're more invested, and then it, it trails off pretty dramatically for the last two-thirds of their, their career here. So we have, we do have several newer officers, which accounts for a significant portion of that. The fire protection, as you can see here, the expenditures are limited to the 3%. It's our fire department under our contract with the other communities. Moving on to the next page, our streets and lighting did go up. And that's, that includes our streets department as well as our street lighting. I did combine those into the actual budget. They are separate. But our street lighting did go up significantly with the energy costs and our streets overall. I think they're, I'm sorry, forgive me, I think they were actually down a little bit overall. And a big part of that is we did have a retirement of one of our employees, Mr. Gardner from last year. And he obviously had been here with the city for 44 years, and having been here so long, the, the change in the wages for that position did decrease substantially. Both the parks and the cemetery, again, they, they had the, we, just over the past couple of years, we've started moving the staff allocation into those departments. And the cemetery, as you can see, because it's relatively a small department budget as it is, those staff changes, or the staff increases resulted in a significant percentage change, but overall, the dollar amount is not that high. The miscellaneous, that includes the fire relief as well as the debt service, and that went up between the two of those. It went up just a 3.8%. And then the capital outlay, this is what I was referring to earlier. We did not have, we don't have scheduled for next year as high a number of projects or equipment purchases scheduled, so that we reduced that. Overall, the total expenses did go down, but as you can see there, the significant portion of that was due to the capital outlay of being reduced. Because we weren't, again, we weren't planning purchasing as many, as much equipment. It's on your screen as well. Okay, the 2023 budget as a whole, it comes out to $4,078,663. On this chart, you can see it actually dipped over last year, and this is just the general funds. This does not include the library. When we talk about the levy, the total levy for, as proposed, was $1,457,703. Library levy was the 195 for a total of $1,652,203, which ends up being a 3.78% total increase on the levy. Again, there's just a breakdown. The debt service was increased the last, I guess last year was the first time that we, our auditors had recommended putting the full amount in there. Part of our debt service is paid by the other communities that are contributing, that we provide service to, and that are contributed to the fire department or the fire station construction. So due to the increase in property values, as well as the reduction in the revenue, and we really tried to be conservative in our budgeting, the proposed general fund levy had an increase of $50,722. This is just the general fund portion. Again, this does not include the debt service or the library. But as you can see, it's stayed, you know, the last two years, it's stayed relatively flat. Previous years over that, it has increased. But over the last five years, this shows you kind of where Bayport sits in the Washington County area. This does not include some of the smaller cities in the valley or the county that are, that have very minimal, less than a million dollars or less than even $500,000 levies. Bayport is right there at 22.4%, and as you can see, some of the cities that are growing have higher levy increases. A lot of that is supplemented or compensated by their growth. That's something that Bayport will be facing over the next, you know, in the future, as we are essentially fully built out. Our, our value will, could continually increase, but we're not going to be able to absorb any growth by any levy growth or budget growth through just, just the, the construction growth. We're not going to have new construction coming in. We had, we did have, just this last year, we had a pretty healthy non-new construction growth. So there were, over the last two years, I know there was quite a bit of building permit, building construction activity on updates, remodels, that type of construction. One thing to note, Oak Park Heights, as you can see down at the left-hand side, they have a very commercial-heavy district, as well as their, they have the King Plant, which will be affecting them come 2028, when it goes offline, when that's decommissioned. But they are in the far end. And Lake Elmo, as you can see, they're, you know, they're, I don't want to say exploding, but they've had, you know, a huge amount of construction. So they are, you know, adding thousands of homes. The tax rate, I know this, this one, this is just, our tax rate, as proposed, will go down 13.5% from, I believe it was 32 to 28, just under 29. This is just a number that most people, you know, doesn't really mean a whole lot to them, but this is the city's portion of their tax bill that's attributable or allocated to the city. The tax impact, which is what most people care the most about, the median value increase, as I said earlier, was 15.5%. And so the, if the proposed levy is adopted, that would result in a $15.91, so $15.91, just under $16, actual dollar increase for the median home. Our projected median valued home next year in 2023 is $332,800. And I won't go through each of these, but you can see the, the, the different dollar amounts for the different home values. And each of those, the 2023 market value is, that's assuming the 15.5% increase in value that the county has set as our median value increase. So if your home is worth the far left-hand column this year, next year, it'll be the 2023 market value, and then the applicable dollar increase. So we, we, the, you know, the median, obviously, the median is the median and not inclusive of every property, but it would be $16 approximately. And even if it's less than, you know, 900,000, at least the city's portion is, or 800,000 this year, the increase would be just over $53. So that, that's the presentation that I have. As I said, I know we have, the council has some questions remaining. I'm happy to answer any right now, if the council would like to take the time to ask questions or discuss anything. Otherwise, I'm, that is the presentation that I had prepared for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's very clear. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council regarding moving forward this evening or another scheduled workshop to dive in deeper? What are the thoughts?
The only thing I would like to discuss, and I think it was me that was the one who wanted to maybe take a little more time, is whether we should be considering setting aside more money for future projects, which would, of course, increase the bottom line taxes for each home. So if you guys want to talk about that now, we could, and then we could come to a decision about if we want to just keep the levy as proposed, or if we think we should increase it. At least for now, because we can always talk more later and reduce it, but we can't increase it after we settle it today if we did that, so. I don't know how everyone's feeling about.
Even with our, you know, slightly extended workshop, I, my gut was we had a little bit of unfinished business. I don't feel we really wrapped everything up. That's just my take on the situation.
Yeah.
I, one thing, Councilmember Dahl, I believe you stepped out of the room at the, near the end of the workshop. One of the things that we had discussed during the workshop regarding the Pavilion Project is that if it was kept in the CIP, it's in there now, that at the October meeting, staff was being directed to bring back, how is it worded? Essentially, we were being, staff was being directed to bring back something for the October, at the October meeting, to approve the, moving forward with the Centennial Village Green Pavilion Project. If that was the, one, one of the issues that you had a question about.
I guess, I understand where Mercutelle's coming from, but I guess I feel like we've had a lot of, we discussed the levy, we went through it, he gave us all the different examples.
I feel like we never really talked about the examples, though. I feel like he gave them to us, and I've seen them, but I don't remember having discussions about where we feel like we should.
Remember, when we sat there, we went through each amount and.
But like, should we, like, I don't feel like we decided, should we be setting aside more money, especially after the discussions that we just had earlier today about how we, we really don't have enough to do all the projects that we want to do, so I.
I'm fine either way. I just know that I feel like we've had multiple discussions on it. We sat there, he presented different.
I don't think Adam needs to tell us anymore. I think we, as a group, I don't feel like we all, I don't know where you stand on, like, do you think we should be setting aside more money? That's what I don't know, is how we feel as a group. I don't want to have a whole nother presentation. I don't want to go into any more details. I just want to understand. Should we be having, you know, the $10,000 additional? Should we be doing that in the levy so we can put that aside for parks or for street projects or whatever? You know, we, we talk about saving, but then we always put it off to the next year to save more money. So if we don't start now, when do we start? So that's, that was.
No, I don't.
What I want to talk about.
Ethan?
I kind of agree with Michelle. I feel like last year, we did it more in a workshop where we talked about what we were comfortable with, if we were adding anything to the, to the levy, making it bigger. So I think we could probably use a little more discussion on that.
I mean, but believe me, this stuff isn't my favorite. It would be easy for me to say, let's vote and be done. I think we'd all rather, I won't speak for anybody else. I know I would rather be done, but I just feel like there are some things brought up that, I, I get Michelle's point.
Yeah, I can go either way. Definitely more than willing to continue to meet. I do think that, Adam, you did detail where we were putting away the extra and to move toward those levels of savings in here. I think they're, you know, they were reflected on, based on our current guidance. But if, if the council predominantly wants to regroup, we can do so.
Yeah, this isn't a reflection on Adam's work from that standpoint at all. I just want to make that clear. So thank you for the good work you do. It's always appreciated.
One of the, I, I have to apologize just for the lot of what we, as we devise the department budgets, as we devise, you know, work on how to make this work, because staff can come back, and we are very cognizant of, you know, what we think we need and what is reasonable. We're not, you know, we are trying to be responsible stewards of the, the tax dollars. Until we know what, from the county, until we get kind of the last information, and it was August 22nd, or I think I got it the 19th, or, you know, right before the, the August 22nd workshop, the numbers that we posed or that we originally come up with are just kind of requests, hopes, and I don't really ever share those with the council. We do, you know, especially this year, we really tried to trim it in because we're obviously trying to be responsible. Up until that point, it's really hard to know. Remember, just kind of coming up with numbers of, we know what we think we need, but we don't know the impact that that will have, and what we can live without, or what we, you know, is it, how much of our priority is it to include that in the budget? It, it's unfortunate that that's the end of August, and then we always have our first meeting, and, you know, this year, it's because of Labor Day, the second, second, you know, week of September. But it doesn't give us a lot of time to work out those details as to, you know, really get it honed in. So I, I'm sorry that it, again, this year didn't.
It is not.
Get it in front of you guys, you know, the first, the last weekend of August or the third week of August. It's just, we just don't have, I could give you what we'd like, but it wouldn't be the most up-to-date or current.
And what's always interesting in this process is that we, we get the different scenarios. If we put in 10 additional thousand, or 20, or 30, 40, 50, we get a, a percentage of increase. But until those, you know, tax assessments, you know, come out to the individual property owners, it's kind of a, it's all floating. I mean, it looks like it's going to be $16 of an increase, and then it's, you know, to some homes, it's 250, to some, it's, you know, 10. So it's, it, that is truly always an unknown. That makes this tricky. I mean, I feel like you've taken in my, my guidance of, of trying to put away every year to stack it up, but I think that we have an overwhelming desire to meet again and go over this one more time from a council's perspective. So I, have we settled on a date?
We have not. I know Councilmember Carlson said that she has a conflict on the 26th. I unfortunately apologize. I do have a conflict. I can't change on the 19th. We can pick any other day between now and then.
We have to have it before the 30th.
Would it, but that's what I was just going to say. Would it be helpful to just choose a higher levy amount as a temporary holding place so that you can complete your obligation to have a certain num, have it in? you can complete your obligation to have a certain num- have it in as the preliminary one by a certain date, but we can always go back and adjust it lower? Like, or, I mean, because otherwise we're under the pressure to have to make sure we all meet.
That would be one option. We have until December fifth to, well, technically, December twenty-eighth, but the truth in taxation, which we do need to decide tonight, which I've already announced once as December fifth. Um so I don't suggest changing that.
Right.
The, we have all of October, the remainder of September, all of October and November to have this follow-up uh budget meeting to bring it down at any amount. Or even, um, you know, it's, right now, it's preliminary. The only thing that really doesn't, that we can't change is the levy amount. Um between the preliminary levy that's due September thirtieth and the final levy, which is December.
We can't change it or we can't?
We can bring it down. I'm saying we can't. We can, we can change everything except for that number other than breaking it down.
What's, what, I like this, I mean, quite frankly, September, the rest, it's tricky for me with kids' activity and stuff like that. It's getting really ugly for me here, um finding a date that's going to work for that. Um what what would be your suggestion on, I mean, do you have a feel for maybe what we should increase it, you know, to kind of build that in and then?
I, the, I mean, the highest alternate uh levy amount was the additional fifty thousand um that you had in your materials. That, because I I already, you know, I have that, I can, if someone wanted to give me a, a number, I can
Very last page of.
Tell you right now what it would, what it would be. It's, it's really what the council would be comfortable with. I mean, a- a- as I, as I mentioned in the workshop, it's hard for me to pick a, I don't say arbitrary number, but it's whether it's the proposed budget, which is kind of I don't want to say the minimum, but that's, that's the minimum that I feel comfortable with. And, you know, the the that does maintain or increase some of it, but it's not everything that we could use. Um obviously, I'm not going to propose, you know, two hundred thousand dollar levy increase. City could use it, but that's, the taxpayers would, we'd all be out of the job. The uh, I mean.
What does it do, like publicly, if we go with, you know, the six point nine two percent increase? Where does that seem out in the public that this is our preliminary levy? Even though it's just a holding spot for us, so we know we're going to bring it down lower than that, is that going to cause a disruption?
Well, other than people, I mean, if people are seeing this, they're obviously seeing.
They see that we're having this discussion.
But there there is the the chance, you know, there's no, whatever's decided tonight, there's no guarantee that it'll come down. So I don't want to give people the false impression that it's definitely going to, unless the council. I mean, and it, because I had, I had posted the fifty, um additional fifty somewhere around there, if if not exactly that um would be the council doesn't necessarily need to know where that's going tonight as far as which special fund it gets allocated to. Um as all the materials that you have in front of you, you know, they they each have their own. I won't say any of them are overfunded. And not all of them are necessarily underfunded, but there's, you know, the 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 five-year CIP only goes out five years. I provided the park extended CIP, which goes up to twenty forty, but they all have, you know, each department or each special fund has potential expenses across, help, well past five years.
So much of, what, where were you thinking in putting the levy to, I mean, what was your thought?
I mean, it it would almost be easier for like, for each council member to decide what actual tax increase they were comfortable with. And I know it's, it's again, the median, as the mayor noted, it's not, you know, every single person with that value house is going to have that amount, because they may not be limited to the median increase in value. But that that is, that's the median. So again, on average, that's what the.
Can we just have that conversation right now? Because then I would be comfortable you know, we could choose the amount based on how we all feel about if we want a different increase than what's presented in the proposed budget. And then we can just move on and we don't have to have a whole nother meeting. You know what I mean? I mean, we can then later talk about where that, if we do have extra funds that we're talking about, where we want to put that. But so right now, because that's the part that, like Ethan said, was missing, is we went, last time, we went through and everyone said, what are you comfortable with for the median increase? And that's, if we could just do that now, maybe that would help us move along. Are then, are we comfortable with that? I mean, even, I'd be good if we just went with, you know, let's do the next level up. So the increase goes up by six dollars and eighty cents for the median household, at least we're putting aside ten thousand dollars for parks or streets. And to me, that's like, not much. I'd I'd go higher than that if you guys would be willing to go a little higher than that.
I think we can vote tonight.
I think so too. So what, how, where are you guys feeling? Are you, does everyone want to stay with the proposed budget? And I'm the only one that wants to put aside more? Because if that's the case, then we just go ahead, you know?
I'm, I'm comfortable and confident in Adam's and the staff's proposal based on his, and they've, they know me, they know that I want to save and that I want to do it in a in a, in a manner that that works for the departments and works for the city. So I'm comfortable with the proposal that he's put forth. But I'd love to hear from the rest of the council. So John? Or anyone? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's, it's okay. Um yeah, th- this is always my, my, it's my weak point as a council member, this this budget stuff. It's, it is difficult, but you know, whether, you know, what's going on in our city, state, country, whether it's perceived or real in terms of inflation and how things have changed. I mean, you know, people's home values have gone up, so that helps out, but you have to have a place to live. So if you're buying something else, it, it's tricky. I hate, I don't want to, um in any way unnecessarily citizen. So I'm I'm torn more so than I normally am, because I get Michelle's point of of wanting to start squirreling away a little bit for some of these other pet projects and be able to help fund other things. So but and at the same time, thinking out loud here, I value what our staff does highly. And when they give me a recommendation and a proposal, that carries a lot of weight with me. Um and it always has, so.
I think last year we ended up going higher than the proposed, didn't we?
We did the, I think the second.
Second one, yeah. So it's not, I mean, we, and we appreciate it, and we know that you're always trying to do like the minimum you can. Like you said, you want to you would love to put a lot more in there, but you're trying to make it as slim as you can so that it is a small increase. And and we appreciate that. So it just not, so that I don't feel like we're like undermining your, you know, proposal by suggesting that we maybe could go a little higher, because I feel like there's nothing wrong with what you proposed, but there's also we could save a little bit, so.
Well, I guess I tend to echo Susan's. I mean, I get yours, but I I guess I have ultimate faith in our staff. Plus, I've been on the council long enough and I feel like there's never been a point where it's like, oh no, we don't have the money. Do you, I mean, the staff seems to know what needs we have. And I get your point about putting money away. But I I can't think of a year that I've been on that we've had to struggle to figure out to to do whatever projects we've had. I would be okay with upping it to the next one, just if you want to have that type of conversation. Because like Ethan said, he doesn't feel like we've talked about it, but but personally, I'm comfortable with where it's at and what our staff has done.
But you have, you have put in allocations, though, to the different departments toward this, the fire equipment in the future and the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fire, the fire equipment, um because we've been working on that one specifically, kind of emphasizing it the last several years, just because of the contract restrictions, um that one has been set, so we haven't reduced that one. I- if they were just looking, if any additional money was put in, um my, my recommendation would be to put in the street reconstruction fund, because those are the, that's what we have coming. You know, the, it, we're, we're the the biggest gap in the funding that we have and the funding that we need is the street reconstruction. That the issue is that even if it's twenty-five thousand this year and it all adds up, it's not going to you know, that extra twenty-five thousand isn't going to have us have enough money when we actually have to do the project without figuring out how to, how else to pay for it. So I don't want to say it doesn't make a difference, but it's not a silver bullet. It's not going to resolve the 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 gap. It'll make it less, but.
I'm sorry. Do you anticipate that that's going to require bonding?
Prob- depending on when we do it, depending on what the, which which of those projects, we have the four different projects there. In all likeliness, we will probably have to issue debt at, in the next five years to accomplish one of those. But this isn't going to prevent us from doing that if it's fifty thousand. And even it it's Madam Mayor, yes, very honestly, it's, we're probably going to have to, if we want to do those projects in the next foreseeable five years, um any of them, we probably should, because as we've been trying to do less and less and stop doing is spending down our fund balance. Now, you have to do it responsibly and be able to pro-plan so you can make the debt payments and just, it's I don't want to equate it to using a credit card, but it's, you're assuming there's going to be an amount of interest, and that still will be cheaper than losing your investment earnings, you know. I don't see, I'm not going to bankrupt the city, but, you know, spending all your cash, you're being, you know, house poor, being, you know, it's, you have to do it responsibly. It's going to be a mix of, over the next well, it it always has been, or it's always should be, you know, a mix of spending your fund balance, spending, you know, bonding for you know, higher level expenditures. I'm not going to blame Matt, but he is trying to fix a lot of things that, you know, have never been fixed. We've got some water and sewer that, you know, aren't eighty years old. We've got things that it's just time, the time has come that the bills are due. So no amount of budgeting in the last, you know, ten years would have necessarily prevented this. But unless it had been incredibly aggressive and, you know, luckily, Matt and Matt and I will give him a lot of credit, we are catching up as fast as we can. But trying to balance that what's reasonable, because we don't want to overburden the taxpayers. And some of these things are even beyond the five years. I mean, that's the other the other factor is that we're collecting money from the residents that are here now for future projects. They may not necessarily enjoy the benefit of that. You know, we hope they do, but if someone's going to be moving in the next, you know, couple of years and the project's five years off, you know, we're trying to be fair to everybody and it's, it's just really a balancing all these different factors.
That's happened over the course of time, too. I mean.
Right, that's always the, that's always the.
It's not like we just started doing that.
No, this is just the way it is.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
We haven't heard from Ethan yet.
Oh, okay.
Right?
We have not. I probably ain't paying taxes more than anybody. But I think even the second one, it's basically doubling what we're, sixteen to seventeen dollars. I mean, or, well, it's thirty-two total versus sixteen. To me, I just I don't see how that is that much for us. And I get the people on the big, that's fifty-two dollars difference or whatever, but you know, even on the bottom one, it's like a tank of gas. And I, I'm not saying I'm advocating for fifty thousand. It's crazy that they even say that, because like I said, I don't, you know, I don't like taxes going up. I don't like any of that. But this is on like a local level and this stuff directly goes to our city. It's not like, you know, when your taxes go up and people are spending on stuff that you don't like. It's like, this is literally to help our city. So there, I'm a little more comfortable increasing it a little bit. I would be comfortable at the second level. But I'm also have faith, like these guys said, I have faith in you, that what you proposed is fine too, but at the second level for that minimal amount, I don't, I don't see an issue with that, but maybe I get a bunch of flak for it, but that's just how I feel.
So what do you need from us now that you've heard all of our opinions? Would some of us, one of us need to make a motion about it? Like to, about the levy and then see how it goes? See how we vote on it? So like, I adopt a, I moved to adopt a resolution for the preliminary, preliminary levy for twenty twenty-three adjusted to meet the whatever, you know, like, is that what we need to do?
It would be the, on that levy
Dollar amount.
Line where it says levy and then like the proposed is a one, six, five, two, two oh three.
Where is that? I don't know why I can't find that.
Page twelve.
I mean, if we don't know where the extra ten, twenty, thirty, fifty is to go.
Right.
Well, streets, we just talked about how that seems like the highest priority. So that or parks, to me, seems like the two things that we could decide on.
We just need to approve. We don't have to.
We don't have to decide right this second, but I feel like we can use that money somewhere.
Correct. The, the, where it's being allocated, um doesn't need to be decided tonight. It should be decided at some point before the, the final. Right now, you're setting the levy, you're approving the budget, um which is and the capital improvement plan. But the, where it actually gets allocated, because it's, it all gets put in, like I said, the majority of it gets put into the unassigned funds in our fund balance. It, it's not, uh, you know, the city council can change that at any time for most of the funds.
Okay, so are the three of you good with the, what it's been presented? Or does anybody want to go up at all? Just so we don't have to talk about it anymore.
Yeah, otherwise we're wasting. I'm, I'm making a motion.
We're, we're okay going up a little bit. If the three of you aren't, then let's just forget it and let's pass it for proposed.
My motion was going to be to accept the proposed budget or the proposed levy increase and not increase it.
Not increase?
Just see what happens.
And then Connie and Susan are the same way, so.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay, so we're all voted, so let's go for it. So I'm not going to make the motion then.
I'll move to adopt a resolution. The preliminary uh levy for twenty twenty-three of one million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Connie. Um roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Sinors.
Aye.
As all.
Second resolution, please. John, you're on a roll.
Uh, let's. We have to have the dollar amount for that one out.
See, that's where it's hard. It's in the back.
Move. Yeah, I'll adopt a resolution of the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-three, but where's my number?
It's in the, there's no page number, so I can't help you.
Should be.
It's four million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
If that is correct, I'll accept. Amendment to my motion or addition to my motion.
What is listed in the resolution? Presented.
There you go.
So, are you good with that, Adam?
Want to start over?
No, I think that's all good, right?
It it's a, I am clear as to what the, the motion's intent was. Uh it was to adopt the resolution of the preliminary budget as outlined in the, as listed in the resolution.
It's outlined in the presentation submitted to us.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you, John. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Connie. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Sinors.
Aye.
As all.
And then our third uh resolution, please.
I'll move to adopt a resolution, proposed capital improvement plan as presented to us in our materials.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Oh, can I ask a question? I know I should ask before he did that. So if when you were saying we could something about the next meeting, vote on the, I mean. I mean, with him doing it like this, does Michelle, do they still have?
We wouldn't need, because the, the capital improvement plan is more of just adopting the plan for which projects, which equipment's gonna be replaced in the, over the next five years. The, a, a separate meeting, cause no actual numbers, because the budget and the levy are now adopted. The capital improvement plan can be amended, you know, throughout the year. As I said, when we get the drainage study, we're gonna have to reprioritize things and so we'll have to update it after we get that information.
It doesn't affect anything. It's all.
Okay, I guess.
We're gonna vote in October to actually.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure that, I wanna make sure I understood that we still.
Cause the CIP has the fifty thousand dollars set aside, so.
Okay, that's all I want. So, did you make a motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
Okay, you did.
You did.
You did.
Adam, please.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Mayor Sinors.
Aye.
I would like to make sure we do talk further about the CIP though and some other things.
Does the council want to select a date now, um, between now and November, uh, now and Thanksgiving?
Well, what's set up on our October? Like, do we have a workshop before the October?
Uh, we were assuming that it would be one. And we'd been working on the sign ordinance, um, as a potential one. Uh, we didn't have anything locked in. There's other business that, um, I know we will have.
I don't wanna have like a whole, like separate meeting for it. If we can do one of those, like, put it in a workshop before the regular meeting would probably be better, since it's always hard to find a date. So, October or November?
Meeting is scheduled for October third, right?
Okay, that's.
The, yes, the third is the next regular meeting.
That would work for me for a workshop.
Are we able, with, is anybody able to do four o'clock?
As long as I don't have, yeah, I could.
That gives us a little more time to make sure we get through it.
Thank you.
And we can, eh, obviously if there's any discussion that each council member wants to have questions answered. Do you have the materials? Please let me know. So, October third, we will plan on having that as the workshop topic, at least one of them. The other thing I just wanna, uh, again announce is the Truth in Taxation public meeting will be December fifth, uh, at the, at six o'clock with the regular meeting.
Adam.
Yes.
Did we just do something, maybe we shouldn't have this meeting until we have the election so that the council that's actually gonna be dealing with twenty-twenty-three talks about what's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-three. Does that make sense? Like, in January or February, should we be looking at the CIP instead of now?
Well, it depends on which aspect you, of the CIP you wanna look at.
Well, I guess particular, I'm looking at twenty-twenty-three.
The regular council doesn't, it's, I'm sorry, so you're saying after January?
Yeah, so that they're looking at, well, what projects do we actually wanna prioritize in twenty-twenty-three? I feel like we could say that, but then when it comes to the council that's actually gonna vote on.
Well, they, they can have that conversation still.
But why, why have it twice is what I'm getting at. Is it, are we wasting our time? Is it, am I sounding weird, crazy?
Well, it's legitimate.
It's legitimate, but I feel like if we, it's another step where we're pushing it off. If there's things that you really wanna discuss or we wanna discuss. I don't know, I guess that's.
I don't, I don't know that there's that many.
I do believe that we're still elected officials until the end of the year.
Yeah, we are, but I'm like, if we're making decisions about what's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-three for projects.
But you gotta remember, they're gonna be coming in, whoever comes in, they can be coming in totally.
Right, I remember.
So, I just feel like.
I, I don't know that we will have the, the infrastructure, the drainage study ready to have all that work done by, our hope is to have it at the October meeting, but that's, that's still tentative. Um, so I don't know that we would be able to discuss those as far as the major projects. And, a- as was noted, there will be, there'll be work expected of the council between now and January, um, when the new council takes, is receded. So, I, I wouldn't put it off until then. Uh, it'll probably need to be updated next year, next spring. Um, one of the other things that we are, uh, that we're also working on is the water rate study. Um, so that's something that, that won't be done by October. Or we might be able to get it done sooner, but there, there's a lot of other factors that will be, um, impacting the, the infrastructure projects and the future capital projects. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it off.
Sounds good. I just, it would just, maybe we were gonna spend time on something that wasn't worth it. Okay.
With that, I am done with the budget portion, so, Adam Mayor, I turn back the.
Thank you. So that will take us to our city council liaison reports. So, I'll start, um, Michelle?
Um, I did not attend the planning mission meeting, cause it was my anniversary on August twenty-second and we already had a workshop, so that was enough city council for one night. And, um, I don't think Anderson Advisory Committee has met in a long time, so I don't know what's going on with that. But I have done a lot with the Bayport Community Action League, which isn't technically my liaison, but, um, yeah, so Derby Days is this coming up weekend and it's gonna be huge. The, um, Party in the Park on Friday night is a replacement of what used to be called the Street Dance the last couple of years. Um, the Legion is in, is sort of the host for the event in terms of, um, beer sales and all that, so they decided to do it at, um, Legion Field, Peril Park. So, um, we're gonna have Tim Sigler Band and a bounce house and the Dunk Tank and fun games and photo booth and it's gonna be a great time.
So, there's things for kids in.
There is definitely things for kids to do, yeah. And, uh, if you feel like you'd like to volunteer to help the Bayport Community Action League that night, we could use some people to, you know, help man the Dunk Tank and do things. We have a, a sign up, just, you know, reach out and we'll figure out how to get you in on that. And then, um, Saturday is a lot, the same, we have all the same stuff we've always had, which is awesome, you know, the medallion hunt. With the addition of the winner now will get, um, a unique centennial medallion as part of their prize in addition to the five hundred dollars. It's made of brass and it's handmade by Dieter Bonderer from Stillwater. And in addition to that medallion, he made us a silver one. It's a sterling silver, almost two ounces. And we're gonna have that in a silent auction right here at City Hall, starting at nine, nine AM until two, one-thirty is when we're gonna end the silent auction. So, come and bid on that and look at the historical display and they're gonna be selling the books that they just, the, um, uh, historical society made a book, um, about Bayport. It starts in like the fifties, has a bunch of photos. And so we got the pep parade, we've got the duck derby, with, uh, everything down at the park starts at Lakeside Park at four o'clock. We'll have live music and a DJ and food and fireworks at eight-thirty on Saturday. Yeah, so it's a, a two-day fun-filled. And so I'll be hosting the duck derby again, so that's always fun to I get to dump the ducks in the creek and Ben will catch them on the other end, so. You can buy your ducks online and at Bayport Community Action League, you can buy it at Woody's, Legion, NJ, uh, Croydale, mostly for people who live there, but you can go on down there. I'm sure they'll sell you some.
And that's where the pet parade is?
That's where the pep parade will be again. Yeah, the, yeah, so, yeah, it's gonna be fun. And I'll just wait, hope it doesn't rain. Usually we get decent weather and for derby days, so. So, yeah, fireworks at eight-thirty at, at Lakeside Park too. And that, those are like pretty incredible. You're like literally right underneath them, so you're around. And also just a warning for those who have dogs that fear fireworks and all of that, it will be happening at eight-thirty on Saturday, September seventeenth.
So, Peril Park on Friday night and Lakeside on Saturday.
Yeah, and then otherwise the medallion hunt is all over town, pep parade is, you know, Croydale, City Hall's gonna have the display.
What night is the band?
The Tim Sigler Band is on Friday night. And then we do have live music. It's, uh, Donovan Galette is gonna be playing from four to six on Saturday. And then after that, we have a DJ so the kids can dance in the pavilion. Yeah, and ice cream, free ice cream too, forgot about that. Yeah, seven-thirty on Saturday night. Yeah, lots of fun. Go on the BCal website and there's the whole schedule there, so.
Thanks to you and everybody on Bayport Community Action League. You guys do a great job, so.
Sarah Schroder is rocking the, the Party in the Park this year, so it's gonna be huge. And then also Woody's is helping a lot too with that. I should give them a shout out. In addition to the Legion.
Excellent. Great, great weekend. Thank you. Ethan?
Uh, we had a scheduled meeting, but it was canceled. They had a COVID outbreak within there. Doesn't sound like anybody, um, was too bad off, but, uh, yes, I don't have any. It's, uh, scheduled for, uh, this month.
Okay, great. I hope everyone's well. Thank you. Connie?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, and.
Mayor, I think you attended.
I did.
Little St. Roith one. Thank you for that.
Yeah. So, um, this last month, I, um, well, several of us attended the groundbreaking for the new library project, which was fabulous. Congratulations to the, to the library. Yeah, you were there.
I forgot about that.
And Michelle was there too. And, uh, great, great, um, event and so excited. And the library is currently set up here in City Hall for your needs in the next few months. Um, also did attend the WMO meeting on John's behalf. Um, everything, uh, that's a great organization. They do just amazing, uh, water quality and, um, conservation efforts. The one thing is that they did review the budget. The budget stayed flat from year over year, but Bayport's allocation went up slightly because of the new, uh, percentage adjustments, but nothing significant. Um, I attended the fire relief meeting, um, the airport ribbon cutting ceremony of the new runway. Uh, so that was exciting. Great ceremony. That airport is kept like a golf course. Um, the gentleman that's in charge of the management, kudos to him. Um, it's beautiful. Uh, I did also go to the airport advisory meeting. Um, we're seeing a similar number of, of complaints month over month. They're typically from the same households. Uh, there may be a slight change in, um, in that traffic, the traffic patterns and the com- and people who are impacted because the runway did move slightly on the, on the land. And so now there might be a slightly different flight pattern. Um, but overall, the mitigation of the noise, um, has been, I mean, they monitor it very closely, so uh, if there are any concerns, you know, reach out to, um, to the, um, MAC Airport Managers and, um, and they will address your concerns. And they follow up with every complaint that does come in. So, that was my month. So, I'm gonna turn it over to staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Chief Eisinger is at Drill tonight, so he was unable to attend. Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to note from his report. Uh, the August call volume was one hundred and eighteen compared to ninety-nine in twenty-twenty-one, uh, so it does look like it is back, uh, to, and the year-to-date call volume was seven hundred and forty-seven compared with, uh, six-twenty-eight last year. Um, so it, it does look like they have returned to pre-pandemic levels. Couple of other, not anniversaries, I wanted to recognize on the fart department, uh, Mike Bell, thirty-two years. Uh, congratulations. Mike Galowitz, twenty-three years. And Andy Swenson, fourteen years. So, we thank them for their service. Um, and with that, I will call upon Chief Eastman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Our past events, um, Night to United and Safety Camp. I just wanna recognize, um, Woody's, Mary Tickner, Brad Smith. For the eighteen years that I've been here, they've been down there serving their hot dogs and, uh, cooking it up for us in the heat and, um, they donate a lot of their time and supplies to include paper plates, um, cups, silverware, mustard, ketchup, but all adds up and their time is valuable. Also need to recognize, um, the Bayport Marina Manager Cory and the Commodore Rachel who helped serve along with my volunteers. Um, and that was August second, as you might remember. August twenty-fourth, we had our ice cream social across the street here and that was sponsored by Eckberg Lammers. And Mabel's gave us a fairly large discount on that. We had a roughly about sixty people there. I didn't see any council members down there, just wanna remind you, you forgot that, so you missed out on your free ice cream.
I didn't forget.
So. Upcoming, September eighth, we had a practical shoot. That was all officers. We joined with Oak Park Heights, um, with our train, the trainers, so to speak, so that's nice. So, we save, um, funds with our training, um, as far as the officers that are certified to train and with their shoots. As, uh, Michelle Hanson, Councilmember Hanson mentioned, September sixteen, seventeenth, Derby Days will have reserves and officers walking around. And I do appreciate everything that, um, that group does as well. It's, I've attended the pet parade when my grandmother, um, relatives were there and now my grandma's at Bayport, um, memory care as well. And so it's just, it's just great. From the duck races to the fireworks and my reserves are generally down there. It's, it's just a wonderful event. So, thank you and everybody that puts that on.
Thank you for having, uh, officers there.
Well, and that's their opportunity to just meet and greet everybody and that's their main reason to be there. Um, we've been working diligently and you might have saw the paper, an inmate, uh, passed away and what is assumed currently from the DOC's press release, Department of Corrections press release is a overdose and we've been working very hard on that death investigation. It's consuming a lot of our time right now. Um, so that's currently what we've been doing. Our total, as of when I submitted this, our total ICRs responses to calls, self-initiated are five thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. And I stand for questions.
That is quite the volume. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, um, for, you know, having you, your presence, specifically you, your presence out, um, at, uh, school pickup and drop-off time. That's really near and dear to my heart, keeping kids and vehicles safe from any accidental interaction, so.
Thank you.
All of your staff for your continued work in that area.
Thank you. Yeah, I forgot. Uh, it seems like it's been so long ago, but that was a very hot evening, um, with the, uh, Night to United.
It was. It was a long day.
It was a very long day, so.
Yes, and thank you, thank you both. I saw you very.
Thank you very much.
I know people are busy. Just had to give you a little bit of a shot about missing out on the ice cream.
We just needed a text reminder of things, so.
You reached out to me. I was, I was ill with COVID or I would've been there, so.
We had some adorable photos that are on Facebook if you wanna see it and some of the attorneys were behind the little faces, so. It was fun. We did a pretty good turnout, so, yes, thanks again.
Glad you guys did that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, next up, Public Works Director Clay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, obviously the summer busy season is winding down. Um, but I'd just like to reiterate that we had a third seasonal employee this summer and it worked out really well. The weird thing is our, all our seasonals are older and so two of them are actually retired and one of them works for the schools district. And so, um, we've had good luck with all that, um, and we'll be having that all three come back next year. Um, so we're able to do a couple of extra things this year, having that third seasonal. One was, um, sewer cleaning, certain areas that have some severe root intrusion that we have to do, um, earlier than every three years, which is our normal practice. And then we've done some fair amount of ash tree removal, primarily in, um, Lakeside Park and Barker's Alps. Um, with that said, um, we have an Eagle Scout who's looking to do, or who wants to do, is doing a project, um, in Lakeside Park. He's raising some funds to plant, uh, twenty potted trees, um, in Lakeside. Um, it'll kinda be like the same project that happened up in, uh, Barker's Alps. Um, we paid for the Barker's Alps ones. It's actually the same, um, scout troop that's planting, um, that's gonna be in Lakeside, but this time, um, he volunteered as his Eagle Scout project to raise those funds. So, we'll be helping him out. Um, couple of the other projects that have been going on is the Box Cover Project, which seems to be never-ending. It's finally completed except for some restoration and landscaping work. Um, so we started, I believe tennis will be starting garbage collection next week in the alleys again, so that'll help out some of the side streets, um, specifically by the school there. Um, ash tree treatment and removal, um, we did treat another twenty boulevard trees. So, our total tree count for treatment is eighty trees. That includes parks, boulevards and in the cemetery. Um, we'll be doing that on a rotating basis, sixty of them one year, twenty the other, uh, cause it's a biannual thing. Um, and then Sealco project, um, the city, um, completed. Um, and then Seal Co. project, um, the city, um, completed, uh, three parking lots, uh, City Hall, uh, the tennis courts, and then, um, public works. Um, it was a seal coat and then they did a, like a, a layer over the top to try and keep some of the loose rock that usually occurs with a Seal Co. project in place. Um, we will be doing, um, we also did crack sealing, um, on the mayor's street. And then some out in inspiration. And then our final project for the year, um, will be a, um, it's called a slurry seal on the trails for the city parks. Um, so hopefully that can, gets completed rather soon. Um, I did want to mention to you, the, the mayor mentioned the, um, helping with the kids crossing. We did have the flasher unit get hit on Highway ninety-five. Um, and we tried our best to, um, essentially rig it up so that you could, that it would flash both of them. Uh, but when they hit the unit, it pulled some of the wires through into the master control panel and actually wrecked the motherboard on that one. And so we, we couldn't rig it up so that way. So now, not only do we have a motherboard ordered, we also have a, a middle connection ordered, or a middle unit ordered. Um, no ETA though on time for that to arrive, so. Uh, but that'll stand for questions.
How does that work on you? If it's criminal, so.
It's an insurance claim, yep.
So you knew who did it.
Thank you very much. Great.
Thank you, Matt. Assistant Minister Taylor.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, most of the items I've been working on were already discussed earlier on tonight's agenda. I do have a few reminders about elections. Uh, absentee voting for the November eighth general election will begin on September twenty-third. It can be done in person at the Washington County Government Center or by requesting an absentee ballot, um, via the Washington County website, which will then be mailed out to individuals. Uh, the Bayport Mayor and two city council seats will stand for election at the general election on November eighth. Um, all Bayport residents vote at the new Bayport Fire Station and polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. Um, lastly, following the election, the city council is required to canvas and approve the election results. Um, the county recently informed the city that this needs to be completed between November fourteenth and the eighteenth. Uh, so staff is recommending the regular November city council meeting be rescheduled from November first to the fourteenth. And I did send out an email, um, seeking availability for that change. Um, I know Mayor St. Norris, Councilmember Hanson, and Councilmember Dahl all have confirmed that that works for them. So I'm hoping Councilmember Gilmore and Carlson that that also could work for you.
That does work for me. I just didn't get a chance to respond.
Okay, great, because we have to report that back to the county yet this week, so if that's the final decision, we'll reschedule that for the fourteenth. Okay, thanks. Um, that's all I have. Stand for questions?
Any questions for Sarah? No, great work. Thanks for the presentations tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, a couple of items, uh, that I just wanted to update the council on. We already went over the budget, uh, discussion. We will continue the CIP, uh, discussion in October. Um, but Steph has been working, uh, quite a bit on that last, uh, month since the last meeting. One of the other items that, uh, I've been working on just in the last couple of weeks is that we, uh, under our TIF reporting, uh, every year as part of our audit, we submit the TIF report, which basically reports all of our TIF activity, um, to the, the state auditor. And, uh, because we decertified the Croydale TIF at the end of twenty-twenty-one, um, but the county had already calculated their certification and they'd already sent us funds. Uh, what they reported, uh, to the state, they reported that they had paid us the entire amount, even though we had paid some of it back and we never paid Croydale. Um, our auditors didn't note that in our report. Uh, they just reported the part that we actually paid. So it wasn't necessarily right or wrong, but there was a discrepancy between the state report and, or that we submitted and the county's, uh, numbers. And so we did have to amend that and refile it. Uh, what, so our financial statements will be different than what our TIF report is. It, it doesn't really have any impact other than someone will have to go back, if they're going back to historically look at the TIF numbers, they'll have to, there'll be another sheet explaining it. Um, but that, that took a little bit of time, uh, with communicating with the, um, just because of the timing of the payments. Uh, we, we are still getting TIF funds this year because of when the TIF, uh, district was decertified. So next year we'll be ahead of this and we'll make sure that, uh, it's all in one report. Uh, one of the other things that we just learned, uh, at the very end of last week, uh, that I, I put in, uh, on my memos, or actually in my report, uh, County Road, uh, fourteen and Fifth Avenue North, uh, we were, we discovered, we were, can't say we were notified, but we learned that, uh, the county has requested a speed limit increase, uh, on the western portion of that, from Stagecoach to Ninth Street, and that, uh, it's gonna go from thirty to thirty-five. Uh, they had a study, um, done after the bridge, uh, through Mendat, after the bridge, St. Crater Crossing Bridge was opened. Um, and apparently, we haven't seen any of the data, but apparently it justified increasing it from thirty to thirty-five. Uh, I know Chief Eastman, uh, contacted them directly as well. Matt got more information. And, you know, we were, uh, Chief Eastman was, um, not supportive of that and, uh, they, they appreciated our input and, um, they, you know, we didn't really have anything to say in it. And we were, uh, they, they were disappointed that we weren't notified ahead of time, uh, but it sounds like, uh, something slipped through the cracks, um, where we learned early. That being said, uh, luckily it is the farther west portion and as it's, the thirty up miles an hour will be maintained as we get closer to Highway ninety-five and the more residential area. It's not gonna change our enforcement of it. Um, the, the five mile an hour, uh, will be enforcing it the same as we have been. Obviously it'll just have a higher threshold. Um, I know the police are very active up in that area, um, with, with patrolling it. So, hey, for the public, when they see that, it was not initiated by the city, um, it was initiated by the county. Um, we did, uh, push back on it, but it's, uh.
And it has changed already.
Already, okay. Yeah, they were, they were doing the locates last week.
Well, all I know is I, I did walk way on the, um, west part, but I was walking by Ninth where it changes and it said, "Begin Speed Limit Thirty." So I assumed that meant that it wasn't thirty prior to that, so.
It has changed this week and I got an email and I didn't know it was gonna change this week and, um, so one of my officers said, "Hey," and conversation.
So just for that three blocks or whatever at the end?
No, it's that whole length of the park, like all Barker's Alps, uh, all in front of that is gonna be thirty-five until you get to the first street.
Oh, you mean your kids play?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, so from what?
So if you're taking Stagecoach and you're heading towards the river, it's that whole stretch until you get to, you know, Ninth is the first place you can take a right. That's where it changes to thirty.
So.
From the sanitarium.
Yeah.
Is there, is there, could we put in addition, I mean, my problem is the, the only, I don't know, I have no problem with it other than the fact that when there's ballgames and stuff there, there's people loading kids up. That, it's pretty bad there. Um, I don't know that we could go over and above what their signage is or something, but.
They already speed on that road.
She's saying, "No, already."
She's, attorney is saying, "No." Yeah, that would be nice, because I walk that road and I can't walk.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, Washington County did, um, they apologized for how we found out, but, um, uh, their last, just to give some background, the last time that Mendat had done, uh, essentially a speed study on County Road fourteen, Fifth Avenue was like nineteen seventy-nine. And so they want, they just wanted to provide an update for that, which resulted, of course, in a increase. Um, Washington County, we did talk about potential, um, uh, pedestrian issues and they brought up the fact that there's a possibility of, um, connecting the sidewalk from where it ends at Barker's Alps to, I think, where it starts at Eighth Street, I believe. So there's a block, a block section that's missing. Um, all that really needs to happen is it's probably gonna, it would probably be a joint effort, um, between Washington County and the city. Um, and if we're in favor of that, um, doing that, that, um, we just contact them to, um, attempt to get it on their CIP. Um, they're, they do like a five-year CIP every year, um, for road projects, so. And that they would be open to that, um, with the possibility of, uh, grants, given that it's pedestrian.
Let's jump on that if you're willing to go half Caesar or whatever, split it is.
I love that.
A- as I said, we just learned the very end of last week, and so we're, I don't want to say it's still fresh, but we are in discussions of how to try to regain at least some of the safety that we potentially will be losing from the increase, so.
I like that sidewalk idea a lot.
Thank you, Matt. Um, uh, we've been, Sarah and I have been working, uh, with, uh, legal counsel on the, uh, nature center lease. I know that was something at the, the meeting on the twenty-second, um, that there were some questions. Um, we're, we think we almost have it finalized. Uh, they, thank, just for the public's information, um, at the August twenty-second special meeting, uh, there, the council, the city council, the city did, uh, vote to approve a short-term lease with St. Crater Preparatory Academy. Um, the nature center, uh, some of the rationale is the nature center is incredibly difficult to rent out and has been underutilized. Um, it's about three hundred, sits empty about three hundred and forty-five days a year. Um, and the, the cost for just maintaining the utilities is not recovered by the, uh, the revenue from renting it. Um, so as the city looks to determine how best to utilize it in the future, um, we've, the council made the decision to, uh, we were approached by the city, approached by the school to, uh, rent it out for some additional office space for two employees. Um, so for the next eleven months, uh, we're, as soon as we get the lease finalized, um, that's the plan. At this time, there's no long-term decision made on the future of it, uh, one way or the other. Um, but it wasn't the city's intention to have a long-term, uh, office space lease at this time. Uh, just wanted to give an update to the public on that, um, so hopefully that's resolved soon. The, just wanted to again reiterate that, uh, October third meeting, uh, we'll be having a workshop, uh, to discuss the CIP and then the regular meeting, uh, following that. With that, I stand for any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you for all the work to you and the T, and the entire staff for the budget preparation, um, so.
Oh, yeah, I want to, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to extend, uh, my thanks to the, all the department heads and the staff for helping with the budget and, uh, it's, we're not totally done, but, uh, we, we've made a lot of progress, so. Thank you, councils, too, for discussing.
Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Needing adjourns.